Yeah.
The guy that had clothing store.
Get more with honey than you can vinegar.
He was like ninety-three, he walked it all over.
It's amazing.
Unless you want it anyway.
Hmm?
Unless you want it.
Well, there's ninety-two.
Okay.
Still.
I mean.
Okay. Well, I'm.
Good genes.
Well, you can't get out in the heat.
I've unfortunately seen.
Well, heck, I can't get out in the heat.
Start with vinegar.
Really?
You have to understand escalating and you get some food, but not gonna be a start with.
We're trying to build a wall of a king.
Yeah.
I bet that's ever so. I remember making grand ads.
What it took was he moved from my brother. Then so he did my new doctors, new nurse, and every one of them said, you need a king, you need a king.
Sorry, they text you.
That's, yeah, that's right, that's about right. They got, he's gotta get it from somebody else besides you.
Really, they convinced him of that.
Yeah. Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending this evening. Would you please stand, if you're able, and join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Roach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back your heads, please. Dear gracious heavenly father, we come to you this evening and we thank you for all that you provide for us and all that you do for us and all that you continue to do for us. We ask you and come to you and pray for those that are sick, please heal them. Those that are suffering, please comfort them. And those that don't yet know you, help them find a way to you to experience your love and your grace. Heavenly father, watch over this council, staff, and mayor tonight. Help and guide us to make the best decisions for our wonderful city. In your name we pray, amen.
I'd call it a word, the August fifteenth meeting of mayor and council. We'll begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or revisions? Mr. Peppers, I believe you have some.
Mr. Mayor, we had, we had two communications on items that are listed on the agenda. The first one is on public hearing on appeal of the denial cases up at Hospital Road. Those are listed under item five A, public hearings. The appellate has asked if council would consider deferring that hearing until September the fifth. Council would need to take action to do that.
Okay. So we will, if council's in agreement with that, deferring that public hearing to September fifth? Any discussion on that? If not, is there a motion to defer?
I'll make a motion to defer that item until September fifth.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed nay. All members voted for the motion, so that item, public hearing, will be deferred until our September fifth meeting.
Mr. Mayor, we also received a written letter of, from the applicant related to item eleven B, which is the discussion and possible action on the master plan amendment. Request remove the requirement of water tank at Laurel Canyon Development. That applicant has formally requested to withdraw his application and would like to do so without prejudice. Council would need to take action on that.
Okay, so that is old business item B. And the reason we're looking at both of these prior to the agenda approval is that if we do have citizens who attended just specifically for either one of these two items, you would be welcome to, to leave if, if we do decide to take action on those, so. So any discussion on item B? If there's, is there a motion for withdrawal of that item?
The motion would be to allow withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay.
And what that would mean, just to remind everybody, is that would not, the one-year waiting period wouldn't apply.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw item B without prejudice from the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Any further revisions, additions?
No, sir.
Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Well, the motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. We do have one public hearing left on the agenda this evening, and that is item B, public hearing on the adoption of new zoning map in response to unified development code amendments. And we have, again, returning for our community development intern, Tyler Peoples, will present this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, mayor and council. This is the public hearing for a zoning map update in response to an ordinance that was unanimously passed in April, which deleted several zoning categories from the unified development code. Again, these include O R T, office residential transition, N C, neighborhood commercial, P D, planned development business office, and planned development, traditional neighborhood development. One hundred and twenty-four parcels are impacted by this change, one hundred and twenty-two of which are zoned office residential transition. These are primarily located along Marietta Road, Hospital Road, and Waleska Road corridors. The remaining two parcels are zoned neighborhood commercial. These two are located along Hickory Flat Highway, State Route one forty, just west of Interstate five seventy-five. There were no parcels in the city of Canton zone, P D, business office, or traditional neighborhood development. Notice was given to property owners via mail of staff recommendations for alternative zoning based upon visual inspection of the properties. Criteria used to formulate these recommendations included current use, lot size, and contiguity amongst proximal, uh, proximal neighboring parcels. The map presenting this, presented this evening has been updated from the map presented at the last August first meeting in that it now includes government and quasi-government properties being updated to special use zoning where applicable. And as previously mentioned during the informational item on August first, staff have, are continuing to receive input from property owners and receiving input from the public on specific cases where we may not know a, a certain aspect of the property by just visual inspection. So with this under consideration, staff are preparing a final map for potential adoption. And given this, we, given the more feedback we are receiving, we intend to push the date of potential action to September twelfth next month.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peoples. At this point, we will open our public hearing. We have three residents sign up to speak. When I call your name, if you become, come forward, state your name into the microphone clearly and your address. Ms. Deborah Venture? Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council members. We appreciate the opportunity to come and provide feedback this evening regarding the letter from the city of Canton dated July the fifteenth of a desire to change the zoning of two of our properties. One located at one thirty Mary Lane, also known as three thirty-one Waleska Road. The post office has one, the county has another, and the other is five thirty Hospital Road in Canton, Georgia. They have been zoned office residential, and the request was to change it to an R four, single-family residence zoning. We were really interested in why the city would ask us to change to depreciate the property value on these, on these properties. We had actually gone to the county about four or five years ago and asked for help in reducing the taxes for the property. And the zoning manager for the county said that the state tax appraisers, pardon me, the state tax appraisers who value property provo, provide that, you know, the current best use of property, of the property in the case of where they're located would be the, the way that the zoning would be applied and that these properties were commercial or multifamily. And so we've talked to a real estate appraiser and feel that the property should not be changed to just an R four zoning, but should in fact go to potentially at least an R A eight. If, if you could please help us with that.
Thank you, Ms. Venture.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas Weaver?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. Thank you for recognizing me to speak, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll be brief. The concern that I share with members of Team Canton and the letter that I submitted to the city's administration is not particular to the city's staff recommendation for the removal of four different types of zoning. However, in regards to one particular parcel on that matter, an approbation of a previous public hearing that the city had in regards to other affairs, which we will not repeat here, I just wanted to bring the city's attention again to the statutory impasse prescribed by the legislature precluding the city's regulation of firearm federal, or federal firearm licensees as it applies to the Walmart property. Even if that particular parcel is not being recommended for change, the legislature has said that the city may not regulate in that matter, be it zoning or in any other manner. So says the General Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mike Abernathy?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm addressing a one hundred Hospital Road property, and it's going from recommended from office residential transitional to office institutional. And my concern, really, I just feel a little vulnerable with the reduction in zoning options. Right now, my property is being used as an office. It's cited by the five parcels, I think, all around me. I'm not sure what they're currently coded as, but they're all residential. And I'm just concerned about going into something that I think restricts the flexibility I have for that property. I'm a little weary about implications, not only for, you know, what it restricts me to, or if it does restrict me, or what the tax implications are as well. I just received my notice for this property a couple, a month or so ago, that went up sixty-two percent from last year. And I have no idea if there's this new code, if it has any implication there. But just, I wanted to state, it makes me feel very vulnerable about where I'm, what my position will be on this property. And the idea that I'm in a, I think, a little transitional state on this particular piece of property also and that the one forty interchange is about, is gonna take place sometime within the next year or two, I believe, that I may be losing part of my property, I understand, which would, I think, make me, be prone to maybe go back to a residential use for that property, which my understanding, I would have to petition for that again if it is actually changed to the new proposal. I just, I like the idea of having some residential option personally for the property. And I just, like I said, I feel like this is probably restricting me, but I may be just ignorant to the fact of what it's really gonna do for me. But I just wanted to at least be here tonight to state that I, as a property owner, I feel a little vulnerable about what's going on for me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Abernathy. That's all the speakers we have signed up to speak on this issue. So we'll close the public hearing and open up to council for discussion. As Mr. Peoples mentioned, we are getting some inquiries to letters that went out. So we are not, won't be considering any action on this until our second meeting in September, which will be on September twelfth. We did have a scheduled change for our September meeting. So our first meeting is September fifth, second meeting is September twelfth. Mr. Turner, is anything you would like to add to that before council discusses that or?
Just, you know, as y'all discussed, there are interesting cases, like the, the lady that spoke where they're requesting one. We've had others where it, there were no permits done and they were quadruplex. So we kinda, we do wanna make them non-conforming. They've sent us documents showing that. Is that, kinda as we move on, I started hearing from the public more. You know, so, for instance, someone else has a commercial, or sorry, residential property that they just inherited that they have under contract for commercial. And so when we chose what to recommend, we base it on the current use. But some people would like others. And I think, kind of from the policy decision from y'all's standpoint, are, are you gonna wanna see some sort of, you know, here's my contract for commercial? Or since they had the commercial opportunity, if they just send me an email? And I've gotten a few that say, I would like this to stay commercial. Is that enough for you? And we can make those updates and then make that, those changes. I'd say so far, we've had about ten people reach out saying either, you know, they're trying to sell it for this, that doesn't match, or it's actually, there's three of them, they're actually quadruplexes. Or like the two people spoke, or three people, and they're not really sure what it is they're looking to do. So maybe some guidance on which way you would like us to take it? You know, 'cause I, I'll get follow-up emails saying, what'd you like? I'm like, well, come to this and we're gonna have an updated map to be in September. So that's, that's something I'd kinda like a little guidance on.
Okay. So in those cases, since you have had about ten inquiries, are those being handled or considered on a case-by-case basis or?
They, they are. You know, like I said, some of them have, like someone today sent, or yesterday sent me a contract. They, they have it under contract commercially. So that's something I wanna go ahead and, that, you know, when we do the revised plan and get you a different spreadsheet and different map, that's one I would switch. Sometimes someone just says, I, I talked to someone on Tuesday, maybe, and they have a tenant in there. It's being used single-family, but the lease is up, I think, in two years, and their plan is just to sell it for commercial. So we either want to stick with what it is, how it's being used, and they can always come back through and we can note that. But then they are going through a process. Or we could, in that instance, go ahead and make it commercial, but that's gonna make it non-conforming to the current use. So that's, you know, that, that's something that, I'm not sure exactly how y'all feel, 'cause it is an option for both right now, but the O R T has been removed. So any guidance on that as I speak to people who've reached out, that'd be, that'd be good.
Okay. So your inquiries, that they all revolve around the O R T, removing the O R T?
That's right.
Okay.
Either because they didn't match or they would like the commercial opportunity.
Okay.
Or, or as the gentleman spoke, you know, he may wanna go to residential, but since it's commercial now, we've shown it as commercial. So just, kinda there's, maybe three or four that are really a gray area that could go, you know, you could kinda argue either way.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what, what exactly would be y'all's will. Or just something to be thinking about and that we can always adopt and have that ready next month.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
I have, I have questions.
Mr. Rich?
Like in Mr. Abernathy's case, it's commercial now and, and the road, you know, may change the way its use is. So years in, in the future, it, it, he wants it to be residential. Is that gonna require the standard rezoning application and all that stuff? Or is there, I mean, is that something that would be noted? That obviously it could, you know, it had the option before? I mean, is he gonna have an issue getting it rezoned? Will it be the standard process with that and a conditional use and all that? Will he just go through the, or not just him, but anybody?
Sure. Right now, it would be if we wanted to consider, 'cause like I said, it's not too many cases, I don't think. You, you know, if we wanted to approve it and say, and I know Bobby's getting nervous, we could say, we could always do a city-initiated. If it, you know, if, if his is commercial now and part of it moves for a road project and he thinks it's better sold residentially, since that is an option now, we could change it and have him not have to take the steps for the process, save him the money. We'd, it'd still have to be advertised and go through the, it'd have to still come here, but that would be noted. That would be something we'd have. So that would be an option to take the burden off the, the property owner. But, but if not, then unfortunately, he would, if we switch it to office and he wants to use it residentially, he's gonna have to come back.
I understand. Mr. Tillman?
Mr. Turner, as it relates to the three or four, maybe all ten of the, the situations that you referred to, could you share those with us via email and kinda give us the rationale between now and, you know, the, the voting meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
Relative to your thoughts and rationale behind why you think that way?
I have a list now, I just haven't sent it out yet because I'm.
I figured, but just wanted to make it publicly aware that that's probably something you would do.
Yeah, so I would take our current list and then note, kinda have a column showing our proposal and then showing it's changed because, for instance, like I said, there are a couple that are, that are quadruplexes.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful. Thank you, sir.
And so we have those.
Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Turner, you don't have to answer this now, but just like, maybe within the next week or so, Mr. Abernathy had mentioned or referenced tax implications. If, if it's possible, could you maybe model out something if there's a change in, in designation? If there are any tax implications, you could use fake numbers, but I just wanna see if there's like a up or down change in how that affects the property owner.
In his instance, my understanding is the, the tax commissioners look at the current use. So if it's an office, that's a commercial zoning and it stays an office, the commercial zoning. But I'll, I'll reach out to the tax commissioner's office and verify that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Appreciate it. You have in your packet the draft minutes from our council meeting on August first. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
There are no changes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft minutes from August first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have one informational item this evening. This is really for information only, and that is for the historic district expansion and residential historic district design guidelines update. Ms. Anderson, I think, is gonna bring us up to date on the changes that have been discussed to that. It's my understanding that the public hearing for this item would be held in October. So, Ms. Anderson, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. At the Historic Preservation Commission meeting held on July first, the commission voted five-two recommending approval of the proposed historic district expansion to city council. Additionally, the commission voted six-one recommending approval with minor changes of the proposed historic district residential design guidelines. The minor changes included editing the language listed under residential accessory dwelling work item of the approval matrix to say visible or not visible from the street and to re, to remove item number five from the residential accessory dwelling section on page two dash eleven of the guidelines that discuss screening of nonhistoric accessory buildings. The next step for this process is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed historic district expansion, which will be held on October third. The code requires that advertising for the public hearing to run three consecutive ads in the newspaper, but less than twenty days prior to the public hearing. Additionally, the code requires that letters are to be mailed to residents within the proposed expansion, expansion area, but not more than twenty days prior to the public hearing. To ensure that the public is aware of the public hearing in a timely manner, staff will work with the communications department to notify the public of the public hearing and to be on the lookout for mailed letters that will, they will receive on or after September thirteenth. After the public hearing, the commission has fifteen days to affirm the guidelines by resolution, followed by notifying the state within thirty days of the affirmation. If the historic district expansion is adopted, letters are to be mailed to the public informing them of the adoption within thirty days. Lastly, staff will be asking for city council to consider an effective date that will be needed to inform the public of when certificate of appropriateness will be required for residential exteriors, exterior changes within the historic district.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So any discussion on that? I know this is kinda information only, and we'll be getting the, the new revisions and recommendations and, of course, holding the public hearing on, on those new revised recommendations, so. Any announcements this evening? Okay. We had no one sign up for our ten-minute public input tonight, so we'll move forward into our consent agenda. We have two items on the agenda tonight that we had consensus on, apparently. However, if there's any of these items, anyone would like to remove for further discussion, I'd be happy to do so. Item A, approval of professional services agreement with Brown and Caldwell. And item B, approval of the ward of the Reinhardt College Parkway at Reservoir Road, intersection improvement project to Glosson Enterprises in the amount of seven hundred and two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Anyone like any of those items, either of those items removed for further discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
If there is no further discussion, I would move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving to old business now. Item A, discussion and possible action on the approval of the downtown master plan. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. At the last meeting, Modern Mobility Partners was here and presented the downtown master plan. And after talking with other staff and Mr. Peppers and Mr. Ingram, we have determined that the D D A should approve the downtown master plan prior to the council approval. So we are asking that this item be moved to the September twelfth agenda. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. That will give you some more time to look over everything as well.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Yes, it's certainly an exciting plan, but there's, as you know from reviewing it, there's, there's a lot to consider in there. I know we discussed this at the D D A meeting on Wednesday. They're reviews, reviewing it in detail, but we did determine, since it was their initiative and their funding, that they should ratify it before council considers approval of that. So as Ms. Watson mentioned, the D D A would be meeting on September eleventh to decide whether to move forward with that and then would be meeting considering action on September twelfth. Any question or comments in interim? So if you have more time to review in even greater detail, so. Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you.
Item B was withdrawn, so we'll move to item C, discussion of possible action on Harmon Park mini, mini pitch programming fee schedule. Mr. Dodson?
Thank you, mayor and council. Since our last time that we met, I did a few days' worth of research based off of other cities and municipalities and how that they handle similar situations. Not many do have turf facilities at their location at this time. And not many have gone through the, the G A one hundred grant program. But after doing all this research, I have compiled a, a bunch of different pricing options, which I've narrowed down to what I will be offering here tonight. I have seen anything from two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for turf field rentals all the way down to around seventy-five to a hundred dollars for a half an hour. So with that said, what staff will be recommending tonight is that if mayor and council do approve programming at the mini pitch, that we set a rental rate of fifty dollars per hour, up to four hours, with fifteen dollars an hour additional for usage of lights. Anything over that four-hour threshold, I would consider a full-day rental, which I do not think that staff will be in support of. If a full-day rental is requested, we will roll it over to the special event committee where we will further discuss, you know, the, the full-day rental at that time. I'm happy to answer any questions and concerns. I am aware that Ms. Forster will be presenting the budget for this year. If awarded, or if approved tonight, I will work with her to get this fee onto the fee schedule as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. So fifty dollars an hour up to four hours. Are there any limits to how many times any particular organization could reserve the mini pitch field? field or?
I I don't see that as being a particular issue. I think, um, I I've already started working with one particular entity, and I think it's it's part of staff's job, particularly my job, is to make sure that there's a a fine line balance between not just Harmon Park, but any of our facilities and not over renting that facility, um, whether it be I've got baseball games at Harmon on Monday and Wednesdays. Is it fair to the baseball entity and the soccer entity that I'm charging fees for both where parking becomes an issue, space becomes an issue? So I think it's it's part of staff's, you know, um, you know, part of what I have to do is kind of balance that out and work with both to make sure that the community gets their fair share, you know, soccer, baseball, whatever other entities we, you know. And again, that's at all of our locations, not just Harmon.
Okay. So staff will be monitoring that and controlling the schedule and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That makes sense. Are there questions?
Yeah, I do. Just as clarification, Mr. Dodson, as it relates to, uh, kind of the mayor's comment, so i- you guys are going to use some subjectivity, if you will, as it relates to the number of days, say, per month that an entity could use the mini pitch, um, for a four up to a four-hour block?
Yes, sir. And 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 I would suspect that four-hour block would be a Saturday-type rental. Um, you know, typically, a youth program would start around five-thirty and not, you know, anything over four hours would take you into nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night. So, uh, the Saturday and the Sunday would be the only time I think we would run into somebody requesting a full-day rental. Um, I I would also like to note that I don't think I am currently in favor of anyone other than a youth programming out of the mini pitch. Um, so that would be, you know, kind of limit the the type of program that we would, um, have out of the facility.
Okay. I think that's fair. Thank you. And and again, thanks for all the work you did. I know it was not an easy task, and and I know you took into account, you know, maintenance for various sports and and, uh, it sounds like you polled some some cities, some other cities, other municipalities, so all that work is greatly appreciated, and I think it's going to wind up with Canton having the the very best, uh, solution possible. So unless there are other questions?
Other questions?
I would like to make a motion that we approve, let's see, we approve the mini pitch programming fee schedule as proposed by Parks and Rec.
Second. Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Item D, discussion and possible action on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and fee schedule. Ms. Forster?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are asking for a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five proposed budget and fee schedule as presented at the public hearing at the last meeting. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any changes since our last meeting and what's being proposed?
No changes.
Okay. Any questions, comments from Ms. Forster? We have certainly looked at this and discussed it and?
I know I sent a lengthy list and got a lot of answers, you know, and a lot of things explained.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I think several of us did. I know we had a, uh, we had very few comments from citizens, but I know those were handled very professionally and efficiently. So we appreciate that information. So. Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and fee schedule.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Forster.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work. We'll move into new business. Item A, discussion of Task Order twelve for Canton Water Treatment Upgrade Feasibility Study to Black and Beach in the amount of eighty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. Um, so city staff has asked Black and Beach to provide a provo- proposal for, um, a Canton Water Treatment Upgrade Feasibility Study, and this study will look at the possibilities of upgrading our existing facility, um, up to potentially eight million gallons a day. This, um, in the water master plan, it was, it called for construction of a new ten million gallons a day water treatment plant at a different location than existing. But we do want to make sure that we're we're being cautious of our our funds and and if we have the ability to upgrade the facility that we currently have, um, and it makes sense, then that would be the, um, way we would go. Um, I would like to ask that we do, um, take action on this item tonight so that we can have, um, um, the preliminary response before y'all's fall retreat, and that way we can, we know which way we want to move forward, moving into the new year. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. So just to clarify, uh, this cost will be studying our existing water treatment plant to determine if we it could be expanded to handle additional capacity, uh, as opposed to or prior to embarking upon an entirely new plant, uh, which we know will not be cheap. Um, I think with that in mind, it's certainly a good investment and certainly, uh, I think a good, uh, good course of action. So, uh, any other questions for Ms. Watson?
Do we have a rough estimate ballpark about what the new plant would cost?
I think we ran the original numbers, and it was about, what, ten dollars a gallon?
Ten dollars a gallon. So we're looking at?
Eighty million dollars.
Yeah, eighty million dollars.
Very similar to the the wastewater treatment and plant expansion.
Big.
Very close. So it's certainly not cheap. So.
And that would not be?
I like eighty-three thousand dollars better. So.
And it wouldn't be including the infrastructure that would be needed to to get the lines down Love's Parkway or wherever we decided to put, um, a water plant, um, to get it to the main lines.
Correct. Okay. Yes, Ms. Square?
Ms. Watson, uh, are you optimistic that we can upgrade the existing facility, or are we just, uh, looking at this cold?
I'm I'm optimistic, or I would not have, um, I don't believe that we would go the route with doing a feasibility study. Um, I've talked to Black and Beach, and I've talked to the water plant and H two O, and we all feel that we could very easily do some moderate upgrades and would be able to, um, have up to that eight million, million gallons a day. We do have a withdrawal permit that's way over the existing plant's capacity, so that's another plus to to doing this. We don't, if we went and did a new plant, we would have to have a new withdrawal permit, and we may not have the opportunity to pool the same amount of water that we currently have.
What is our current capacity?
Uh, five point four five million gallons a day.
Five point four? And what is our average usage a day?
Um, in the summertime, we're getting pretty close to five million gallons a day due to irrigation, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we have a projection of when we might need that extra two gallons if we're able to upgrade two million gallons or?
Um, in the water master plan, it said that we would be meeting this, the capacity that we have now. We would be further along than we are now, so we'd be pretty close to five point four five in twenty twenty-five.
Okay. And the eight millions, if we got that, when do we think we would exceed that?
Um, I I believe that the eight million gallons a day was twenty forty.
Twenty forty, I believe that was in the master plan. So. It almost doesn't sound like that far away, but. Well, I think it's, uh, I appreciate everyone's work on this and and looking at it, uh, and and we have a solution currently in our grasp versus, uh, building an entirely new plant. It's certainly, I think, is is a worthwhile exercise. So if council agrees, Ms. Watson has requested action, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, Task Order twelve for Canton Water Treatment Upgrade Feasibility Study to Black and Beach.
Second.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Item B, discussion of request for proposals for annual financial auditing services issued July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Forster, welcome back.
On July ninth, twenty twenty-four, the city issued an RFP for annual financial auditing services with a due date for proposals on July thirty-first. The city received four proposals, one of which is from the incumbent auditor. We're bringing this to you because we expect auditing services plus single auditing services for the next several years to exceed fifty thousand dollars. After comparison of technical and price proposals, the review committee recommends council award a contract to Rushton LLC, which is the incumbent auditor, for three consecutive fiscal years, beginning with the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, through fiscal years ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with renewal available to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. The city of Canton has engaged the services of Rushton LLC for financial audits dating back to fiscal year twenty fourteen. Our most recent contract for professional services has expired. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that governmental entities undertake a full-scale competitive process for selection of independent auditors at the end of each audit contract. The GFOA also advises governments to enter into multi-year agreements of at least five years in duration when obtaining the services of independent auditors. We're happy to answer any questions regarding these proposals. We're not asking for any action tonight. We will be asking for a motion to award the RFP at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Forster. And just, uh, for confirmation again, to repeat, how many, um, proposals did we receive to the RFP?
Four.
Four? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Forster? Yeah. Consider that our next meeting? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion and possible action to readopt the city of Canton's defined benefit pension plan documents. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in January, GMEDs, which is the Georgia Municipal Employers Benefit, uh, system, they handle our defined benefit plan. It's closed to new participants, but we're s- we're still active in the plan. They approached the city and said that they had to take their master plan to the IRS to get it re- essentially requalified. The IRS did requalify. They made a few few changes to their master plans. Does not impact the city of Canton, does not impact our plan. There's no cost consequence to it. But what they've done, they've reached out, GMEDs has reached out to all participating cities and said, we need y'all to readopt the plan of those few changes. Um, this was my mistake. It was very busy in the city come in January, February of this year. Um, unfortunately, that fell through my cracks, and we were reached, they reached back out to us a couple of weeks ago and says, hey, did y'all ever get that signed and approved by council? So I'm bringing it for you, uh, before you tonight. And that is the reason I'm going to ask if y'all, uh, would consider taking action on on this. Again, there's no impact to the city. It's really just a straight-up formality.
So basically just?
Happy to answer any questions or or get you some response.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. So basically just reaffirming the plan that we have in place. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ingram? Ms. McGrew?
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion with us to adopt, readopt the city defined benefit pension plan documents.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. And item D, discussion of survey of on Canton Building Authority property within this Laurel Canyon Soleil development. Ms. Ingram?
Yes. As the Mayor and Council is probably aware, in our current lease agreement with the golf course operator, there is an option for the purchase of that property. One of the first things that we're required to do is we need to know exactly what that, uh, so we need to have a survey completed on that property. Now, in doing that survey, we're going to add a couple of more benefits. We've got a few pieces of property on there that has some water and sewer infrastructure. It, uh, on them, three pieces in particular that we need to have those carved out so that they can remain the property of the city of the city of Canton. Right now, that property is in the Canton Building Authority's name. So one, we, uh, reached out to a local surveying company and asked if they could give us a proposal to do a survey on that property. If you will look, I've inserted in the, uh, slideshow, this is a outline of that property. It is by in no way, shape, or form a contiguous piece of property like you would usually assume on a survey. It's essentially almost like six different pieces of property. And those three stars that you see there, they represent the area where the we're going to carve out three small pieces of property that that need to remain with the city. So in front of you, you have a copy of that survey agreement. Um, it is eighty-seven thousand dollars, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to put in front of you a map, just to show that it's not a straightforward, simple contiguous piece of property. It's about two hundred acres, and there's a lot of twists and turns. And, uh, and furthermore, we we've talked with the surveying company about possibly doing, uh, in- internal infrastructure survey, which would just basically, uh, point out the cart paths, the parking lots, the buildings and stuff on that, so that we would know, we know exactly the size, et cetera, some of the description of those properties. So once again, time is of the essence. This is going to take, uh, approximately two to three months to complete. They do have a window open, so they can get started on it pretty soon, but two to three months, that's going to take us before we can get everything said and done with. It's going to take us toward the end of the year. And, uh, um, we do know, we've we've had a response back that, uh, that we do want to get this ball rolling as far as the transit transition of that property. So we are asking for action, if possible, from the city, city council tonight. I want to point out one more thing for the council's information, as well as the audience, is we have full intention of taking the cost of this, uh, survey and rolling it into the, uh, disposition of that asset, the sales price. So we'll get this Canton Building Authority, we'll set it up as a do-to-do-from and, uh, use those proceeds of the sale to fund this. So no taxpayer money or anything like that's going to be used to for this survey or for any other of the closing costs for that set, for that matter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Um, so you are asking for action tonight?
Yes, sir. If it if it if it's amenable to the council so that we can go ahead and get them, get them, uh, working on that survey, because it is going to take, they said, they told us eight to ten weeks of actual feet on the ground working.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Ingram? And certainly, I think, who's us to know exactly where everything is and?
I'm I'm going to disclose, I don't think it's the end of the world. If y'all want to take some time to to review it further, I don't think it's the end of the world. But again, it's going to take up to three months to get that survey done. And and delaying them may put us a little bit further down their list of of, uh, tasks to do. So it did say that they could get, they could get going on the survey very quickly if we get it approved.
It's finally questioned. This may be for Mr. Dyer. Would this be an action of the council or the Canton Building Authority, which I think in essence is the council now or?
I mean, technically, it's the Canton Building Authority that'd be hiring the surveyor, but they don't have any money, I assume, so.
No, they do not have any funds. And that's that's the reason I mentioned. I I think it could be set up in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dyer, as a do-to-do-from, do-from the CBA contingent upon. The CBA later approves to reimburse the city based on?
Right. I think you're technically loaning it to the building authority to be repaid out of the sale.
Okay. Just want to confirm that. So any questions, comments, discussion on this item? Would council like to take action on this this evening?
Be happy to if I knew what a motion looked like.
So the motion would just be to approve the expenditure of the funds for the survey?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Should we approve the expenditure and funds for the survey of, uh, of the property noted?
Okay.
Laurel Canyon.
Okay. What motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second? Okay. Second. Further discussion? Mr. Waterman, any other question?
Just for clarification, you didn't say that the cost of the survey will be rolled into the, you said, the disposition of the asset, so the golf course, so whenever it is, it is sold.
Yes, sir. We'll use those proceeds of the sale and get CBA to approve reimbursement to the city. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few updates for you tonight. Cherokee County has completed all of the paving projects that we had jointly contracted with the City. The striping part of those projects is not completed, but the actual paving work is done, so I want to let you know that. I did want to highlight a couple of, of, of things that are going to be going on in the community over the next few months that Ms. Norton Green has been involved with. She's, she's had some really good luck with Fox Theater lately. We have a partnership with them, and they have, they have joined with us and other theaters across the South to highlight independent films by Southern filmmakers, and those will start in September. And you can find out more information on the city's pages about that, but they are cosponsoring that with our theater. And then in January, they're doing a tour of historic theaters in North Georgia, and our theater will be a stop on that. So, I think those are good, good things for the Canton Theater. Also, on the 24th, in this room from 10 to 2, there is a Hispanic Business Networking Event. Some of our local Hispanic business owners are getting together and using this space to help highlight that network of businesses, and Ms. Norton Green's been... The last thing I wanted to note is, as we have our team member of the month for July, Mr. Adam Dodson, he, he handled the fireworks very well this year, after taking some punishment last year over fireworks. He did a great job with those this year, and, and actually, the, the nominations for him just mentioned the fact that he's a great servant leader. He gets in the trenches with, with the people he works with and, and gets the job done. So, we're excited to have him as our team member of the month. And for anybody in the building, as you're on your way out, today is National City Hall Selfie Day, so you might as well just grab a picture of yourself in front of City Hall and post it on social media and hashtag City Hall Selfie and, and just become a part of the national movement today. So, if you're interested, please do that. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And great, congratulations, Mr. Dodson. He certainly did a wonderful job this year on the fireworks and everything else that he does. So, appreciate that. So, and great news on the Fox, it sounds like the Fox Theater discovered the coolest small town in America. So, we're happy and honored to be a part of their efforts there. So, any council introduce items? And just double checking, we didn't have that as agenda approval, but always double checks. I don't, can stay out of trouble for a few minutes at least. So, I have one item on my report this evening. As you guys are aware, the city purchased, or took ownership of the old Tippins Elementary property. The Canton Housing Authority was responsible for the demolition of the, the, the former school, which is completed now. The city is going to be restoring the gem on that property for our citizens' use. However, we are still, there's still no plan or, or no definitive action on what to do with the property, and we've discussed several things and several opportunities. However, we do want to look at that and as strategically as possible, see what fits our roadmap priorities. And so, I would actually like to appoint a, a, a committee this evening to take a look at the Tippins project and meet with our potential partners, stakeholders, and just, I'd like the council committee to come back to the full council and mayor at our fall retreat, which we're tentatively looking at the beginning of October. So, we have a little bit of time to complete this task. But have the committee meet, look at that project, come back, give us your thoughts and ideas, and, and so we can, and get a, get a plan and action there. So, and so I'd like tonight to appoint Mr. Tolan, Ms. McGrew, and Mr. Yon to that committee from their respective wards. And I mentioned that to you before. I think you've all agreed to serve, and I appreciate your service, and I'll leave it up to you guys to, to organize and meet and report back to, to council at our fall retreat. So, thank you for the service of that. We look forward to your ideas and suggestions. So, and that's all I have this evening. If nothing else, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to the executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Is there a second, or you guys want to keep meeting? Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us, everyone. Have a great evening.